Okay, good evening, everybody. If I can ask everyone for, uh, thank you. We're gonna get going. My name is Chris P., I'm calling to order the special town council meeting for the town of Stratford. Today is September 12th, 2023. It is 7:30 PM. The first item, excuse me, the first item on the agenda is gonna be the invocation and pledge. Councilman O'Brien.
Patriots' Day is observed every September 11th to mark the anniversary of the terrorist attacks against the United States. As we work in peace, forgiveness, and reconciliation, let us make this a time for hope in God's grace, in ourselves, and in one another. As we remember, as we remember the horrifying events of September 11th, 2001, hold us in the shelter of your enduring love. Grant that the passion of our Lord and his infinite love may make faithful for good the tribulations of the innocent, the sufferings of the rescuers, and the sorrows of the bereaved. We ask this in the name of your son and our brother, who suffered and died for the sake of all people. Amen. And with that, can we have a moment of silence? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the beloved British Isles. One nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
First item on the agenda is gonna be the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting of July 10th. Bless you. July 10th, 2023, and special meeting from July 13th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
No move.
Mr. O'Brien, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Danchow. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes. Motion passes. Nine zero. Thank you. The next item under ceremonial presentations and awards. So we are honored to have a fine young gentleman with us this evening who, who has been nothing but instrumental to this town. And I'm not gonna steal the mayor's words, but myself and the mayor are gonna come up, and we're gonna be honoring Mr. Frank Keckow tonight of the Booth Park Commission for his many years of dedication to this town. So give us a moment, we'll climb on up and say some words, sir.
Frank, you wanna join us?
Of course.
I miss you not having your derby hat. You all know the wonderful things that Frank has done for Booth Park. And we're happy to say that the world downloads it, especially the Connecticut magazine featured the beautiful roses and rosemary. And you have made us all just so much more informed about not only the beauty, but what it takes to create that beauty and maintain that beauty. So thank you, Frank. And we have a proclamation in recognition of Frank Keckow, whereas recognition of Frank Keckow's dedication and caring to the Booth Rose Garden for twenty, over 26 years. With passion and dedication, Frank recruited and taught, and now devoted, I bet you they're all here, right? Sharing the knowledge with them about the sensitive plants and how to nurture them throughout the year, and Frank's persistent progress and perseverance period to make sure we're doing the right thing to achieve one of the finest rose gardens, I have heard, in the state of Connecticut, which has been recognized, and his hours of work each week at the garden, which exceeds the amount of time spent by all the other volunteers. Frank has taken exceptional care of gardening for specific roses and other flowering plants. And Frank's passion for the garden has inspired so many to become sponsors, including Boy Scouts, Sterling Health members, and retirees. Therefore, now therefore I will honor the Lord and the mayor of the town of Stratford by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the town, do proclaim the 12th day of September 2023 as Frank Keckow. Oh.
Well, it's less than nine years. But I'm not a long one. It's a we operation.
It is a we operation.
But volunteers are presently here.
It's like, it's like a wedding. You're all on one side. But thank you, thank you all for all of this. And also persistent, because you have to get the right fertilizer. I got the cherry tree.
Can we give another round of applause for Frank? Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate everything you've done. All right, we're gonna move on. Next item under Mayor's Report is gonna be Mayor's Report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you all for being here tonight. It was really special to honor Frank. Thank you for being here tonight. It was special to honor you. Very special to honor you. Under Town News and Observances, opioid and overdose, overdose awareness campaign launch, the town announced on August 31st, International Overdose Awareness Day, a new townwide initiative to highlight town and regional partner resources, educational opportunities, and support systems that are in place to help individuals and families affected by overdoses and the pervasive opioid crisis. Our community resources, along with nonprofit partners in the region, are invaluable to aiding those affected by this ongoing crisis. This campaign is to ensure our community knows that these resources exist, and it is okay to need help, whether it be assistance in preventing overdose deaths, or supporting families and individuals wherever they may be in this incredibly challenging journey. It is our goal with this campaign to end the stigma by encouraging open dialogue and unbiased support. Town departments are currently working on a section of the town website that will be dedicated, a dedicated source for all the educational opportunities, community and health services, and local and regional partners. This section will launch later this fall within the long-term campaign to encourage more openness, connection, and the campaign will continue to evolve. On September 11th, the Stratford BFW held its annual memorial service to acknowledge the horrific events that occurred 22 years ago yesterday. We have all had very personal memories of that day, remember the loved ones, colleagues, friends, and family who lost their lives. We honor those who perished that day and over the years from this horrific tragedy. We also honor the first responders and all those who sacrificed their lives since then for fighting for the justice and our freedom. My personal thanks to the town council members O'Connor and Brian, I'm sorry, Connor and O'Brien, that attended the ceremony. Yeah, O'Connor and Brian, yes. The Health Department has conducted several back-to-school clinics, providing school physicals and immunizations to help get students ready for school. Flu season is just ahead, and the Health Department is poised to offer flu vaccinations starting later in September. Check the website or call the clinic for dates. Once a new COVID-19 booster vaccine is approved by the federal agencies, the Health Department will offer it as well. The Health Department has officially awarded the block grant from the State Health Department. This grant, approved in July by the town council, will focus on the development of community gardens, gardening and healthy living education, enhancing infrastructure for the staff benefits to use at the farmers markets, and planning and the design for the arboretum. This grant is expanded, this grant is to be expended over a five-year period. Under Community Service and Senior Services, this month, the Baldwin Center joins senior centers across the nation to celebrate Senior Center Month. The 2023 theme is Discover Us, and we have plenty of exciting upcoming activities that shine the light on our network and our supports and resources. On September 29th, Baldwin members are invited to enjoy the Big Bee Fall Festival, featuring a company of friends, favorite treats, and door prizes, all made possible by Baldwin's many friends and supporters. Thanks to the CDBG CV funds, with the support of the Housing Authority and the Health Department, we are piloting pop-up farmers markets at our senior housing this month. The AAP Smart Driver Course is offered September 15th at the Baldwin Center. A new roof was installed at the South End Community Center after another fun and safe summer day camp program. Bridget's Healthcare Wellness on Wheels vehicle will be in the parking lot, shared by Baldwin Center and Stratford Library on September 28th from 12 to 2:00. This provides accessible street-side healthcare treatment for those 18 and over. The vehicle is staffed with a nurse practitioner and a medical assistant, and offers physical exams, health screenings and tests, mental health and addiction screenings, referrals and follow-ups. No appointment is necessary. The Stratford Partnership for Youth and Families has awarded a Federal STOP Act grant to continue efforts to prevent underage drinking and promote emotional wellness for youth. We are one of 50 grants awarded across the United States and the only community in Connecticut to receive it. Under the Economic Development Front, the Army Engine Plant, the Army and the developer continue to work on the conveyance date. The suppression system for the airport hangars that originated at the Army Engine Plant is being connected to the Main Street water line, and then consequently, the hangars will have their own water source to provide fire suppression. The complete streets Phase 1 is started, and the curbing, you can see it right in front of Town Hall. Zoning regulations and update and rewrite were currently planning, and promotional videos and concepts are looking at a year and a year and a half to complete. The Plan of Conservation Development is consolidated chapters are being reviewed, and then will be forwarded to the state for approval. Edits can be made prior to Aug, well, they already made prior to August 20th. For additional information, you can find it on www-plantsstratford.com. On some business updates, Sikorsky landed a $2.8 billion contract for the first mass production of new heavy-lift helicopters for the Marine Corps. And I think we were just, something was announced today that they just got another contract for about $2.8 billion for additional aircraft sales. We had some large conveyances. 105 Ontario Street conveyed for $2.2 million. We've had some ribbon cuttings, pre-game sports, 2399 Main Street, that was on August 10th. PK Salon celebrated 30 years of business, and that was held on August 23rd. And the Wellness Spa, which is 7365 Main Street in Orinok Plaza, celebrated new ownership and rebranding on September 7th. We have some upcoming new businesses. The Starbucks at Parkway Plaza had its soft opening at the end of August. They will be hosting the BRBC Economic Development Committee meeting on September 13th, and they will be presenting their plans for Phase 2 of that development. Take 5 Oil Change on 1770 Barnum Avenue is open, and we'll have a ribbon cutting soon. Lobster Craft is located at 2377 Main Street. The IHOP International House of Pancakes is going to be located at 2505 Main Street. Little Teeth of Stratford is located at 2900 Main Street. And Foodie's Cookbook Shop, 3548 Main Street, is taking out a permitted permit for remodeling. Upcoming events, the Latin Music Festival was rescheduled from last Sunday to this Sunday from 12 to 6 PM at Paradise Green. And I wanted to talk to you just a little bit about ARPA funding and how we plan to use a little less than $4 million, and that's for sanitation. As you know, we have a lot of litter in town, and a lot of it's caused by open trash cans that when people leave out, the shorebirds and the animals get into it, and litter spreads all across the street. So the concept of using new garbage cans that have the closed lid that many municipalities use for recycling and for trash are, it's a concept we'd like to go to. So we have to retrofit some of our trucks to have the lift mechanism, and then we have to purchase a few more, and it's approximately $3.8 million. So we're going to be working on that development, going out to bid, and so I just wanted to make you aware, that's something we had talked about before, but I think it's a benefit to the entire community. That's my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Open up to the council for questions for the mayor. Ms. Kent.
Thank you, Chris. Hello, Mayor. From a resident homeowner perspective with the new garbage cans, do they purchase their own, or is this something?
Good question. We purchase them. The initial ones, we purchase, kind of like the old, old first recycling plan.
First one.
Right. We, we purchase the bins, and then, and then if, if there's destruction or something happens, then they can purchase other ones after that.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Do you, Mr. Chair, Chair, Chair? I do have one, well, two questions for, for you. First, first question, I'm very, very, very pleased to, to hear about this new sanitation sys, sys, sys system, but the only thing that I've heard question is, will it cost, cost, cost jobs? And that's my only ques, question to, to you regarding that.
Good question, Councilwoman. No, it will not cost jobs. We will not, we will keep the members of the Public Works Department that we currently have. We may allocate them to a different area, but it will not cost them jobs. As a matter of fact, it depends on what technology, and it's gonna take 16 months for this to be fully implemented, so I think we'll see how we go. Three, I believe three of our trucks can be retrofitted, so that'll happen faster, and then the others will, hold on a second. Sarah, I think we have to leave that open.
Sarah, we have to keep one door open, please? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So it's, it's a work in, in process, you know, a progress, excuse me. Yeah, but no, no jobs will be lost.
Okay, thank, thank you. One other question through, through you, just wondering, do you have any updates on Hyde Park? Is what I'm wondering, if you could maybe share, share, share?
So I know that the Public Works Department is working on plans for Hyde Park to present to the Recreation Committee, so they can look at, at the plans, and then review it, and then approve it.
Oh, oh, okay. How, so, so my concern at this time is that there are currently nails sticking up and other issues at the park, and that I'm very concerned about, and wondering when we will be addressing those mine, 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 minor issues.
So the, I, this is the first I've heard about nails? I've heard about people going to the park and having parties without permits and bringing farm animals to the park, but I haven't heard anything about nails. So where are the nails?
Around the perimeter of the play, 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 playground, they are stick, stick, sticking up, and wondering about safe, safe, safety, and when that will, will, will be addressed, addressed.
We'll, we'll talk to the Public Works Director tomorrow.
Okay. And the quotes for the other work that's being addressed, do you know when those quotes will be made, 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 available?
So what will happen is, after they finish the layout and the design, it'll go to the Parks and Rec Committee, and they, if they approve it, then it would go out to bid. So we won't have the quotes until after it goes through the committee process.
Oh, okay. And you don't have time, time, timeline?
I don't have a timeline right this minute.
Okay.
But I would expect it would go to the Park and Rec Committee, maybe, maybe, Park and Rec Chairman, maybe next month? Maybe? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank, 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 thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Seeing none? I'll just ask one question, Madam Mayor. I think, I think that's what you hit on, but I want to confirm it. All the, all the gravel and asphalt being torn up, that's where the water suppression, at, at the airport? That's where the water suppression's being done?
Yeah, so, so the water came from the plant, and that was one of the reasons why the plant had to be heated all winter. And so with this agreement that the water was now coming off the main, and the hangar owners are, I guess they're tenants, they're not the owners, but the hangars would operate that and pay for it. That's all part of this process, and then the contract was awarded to Birds Construction.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on. Town Attorney's Report, Mr. Hodgson.
Thank you, Chair. This is my August report. The Town Attorney's Office settled a personal injury claim in the amount of $15,000 against the town. We settled three property damage claims against the town. The sum of the three settlements was approximately $1,100. We recovered $2,100 in property damage to a town vehicle. There was a tax appeal filed against the town by Orinok Village Condominium Association. There were 20 FOI requests, and we recovered approximately $1,700 on late recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodgson. All right, moving along down to resolutions. I will entertain, for item 6.2.1, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Danchow.
Motion to approve item 6.2.1, a resolution regarding an AT&amp;T Foundation Technology Grant for the South End Community Center, and this is in the best public interest, and that the town of Stratford will enter into agreement with AT&amp;T in the amount of $12,000 regarding, requiring $0 in town match.
Okay. Motion been made by Ms. Danchow. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. O'Brien first. I'll go with him. Discussion on this. We have a lot of resolutions tonight and grants. Molly, thank you, to all the, Tammy, to thank you to all the town departments that keep pouring these in every month. It helps everybody, so we appreciate it. Seeing no other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.2. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Danchow.
Motion to approve item 6.2.1, a resolution regarding an AT&amp;T Foundation Technology Grant for the South End Community Center, and this is in the best public interest, and that the town of Stratford will enter into agreement with AT&amp;T in the amount of $12,000 regarding, requiring $0 in town match.
Okay. Motion been made by Ms. Danchow. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. O'Brien first. I'll go with him. Discussion on this. We have a lot of resolutions tonight and grants. Molly, thank you, to all the, Tammy, to thank you to all the town departments that keep pouring these in every month. It helps everybody, so we appreciate it. Seeing no other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.2. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Danchow.
Motion to approve item 6.2.2, a resolution regarding a Regional Youth Adult Social Action Partnership Local Prevention Council Grant, and this is in the amount of $7,141.55, requiring $0 in town match.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Danchow. Do I have a second? Who was that? Ms. Shake. Okay. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.3.
Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve, Ms.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make the resolution, 6.2.3, move resolution regarding the Connecticut of Children and Families Youth Services Bureau Grant to fund the local Youth Service Bureau, whereas it is desirable and in the public interest, the town of Stratford entered an agreement with Connecticut Department of Children and Families in the amount of $63,569, requiring a $34,771 in town match.
Okay, motion been made by, was certain. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Francesi. Do I have any discussion on that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms., Ms. Shake.
Thank you. I think that this is an amazing grant. I'm curious as to where this would actually be, I guess, as, as a home base? Would it be, if Tammy would be the one to answer that question, or is there a community partnership that the town would be holding this?
This funds the Youth Service Bureau. This is the one we've had years and years and years and years and years.
So it's just getting more money for the same thing that we have?
Yeah, you've approved this in the last four years.
Okay. So it's just a reiteration. Thank you.
For the great work that you do, Tam.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. That was point two, correct? I'm sorry. That was point three. I've lost my track. Yep. Next item on the agenda is gonna be 6.2.4. I'll entertain a motion for.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Danchow.
Motion to approve item 6.2.4, a resolution regarding a formula allocation request to the state of Connecticut, unit on aging, supporting capital improvements at the Baldwin Center, addressing health, safety, and accessibility issues. This is in the best public interest, and the town of Stratford will enter into agreement with the state of Connecticut, unit on aging, in the amount of $147,371, requiring $0 in town match.
Okay, motion by Ms. Danchow. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. O'Brien on the second. Any discussion? Mr. Kent.
Thank you, Chairman. No questions about the grant, but in, we have many public buildings. Would there be other grants, for example, for Town Hall, or for the schools, along the same lines of minimizing cross-contamination?
So, discussion's limited just to this grant, Greg?
Okay, then.
I just want to keep it specific.
I understand. That's good. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is gonna be item 6.2.5. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Danchow.
Motion to approve item 6.2.5, a resolution regarding a joint grant application with the city of Bridgeport to the U.S. Department of Transportation for Stratford Avenue and Connecticut Route 130 improvements and streetscaping. This will allow the town of Stratford to enter into agreement with the U.S. DOT in the amount of $20,800,000, requiring 20%, $4,160,000 in town match, coming from the leveraging of low SIP state funds from the CT 130 Roundabout Project.
And I'll second.
Motion has been, hold on. Motion's been made by Ms. Danchow. I have a second.
A second.
From Ms. Sutton. Any discussion on this?
I, I, do you, Mr. Chair, Chair? Just wondering about the Roundabout, because that was slated to, to, to start, I believe, earlier this, this year. What does that mean, mean? Is it going to change, change? What's, can you please talk a little bit about, about, about that?
Madam Mayor.
The Honey Spot Roundabout, we're talking about Honey Spot Road by Two Roads, and that's been in, works for a long, long time, like before COVID. And a lot of negotiation had to go, because we had to take some private property, and it was in agreement, and we finally have all the pieces aligned, and with this grant, it helps us fund some of those legal fees we're incurring too. But the, but it's the same area, and it's from Bridgeport, because Bridgeport is working on their Stratford Avenue project, and as a matter of fact, they, I think they have contemplated or have already proposed to make it two ways. Instead of, you know, when Stratford Avenue go one way north and one way south, they want to make it to, same road two ways. So they're gonna make some changes to this, and then it's gonna incorporate our Stratford Avenue all the way down to Main Street.
So there are no changes? The Roundabout is still, 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 still going to hap, hap, hap?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank, 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 thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on that item? Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I'm just confused about the Bridgeport piece. Are they part of the $20,800,000, and are they also matching with 20%?
This is our portion. That's not their portion.
So they also?
They have to match too. Yeah, you can't get this grant without some match, 20% of. I think there, theirs might be more.
Okay, Tom.
Yes, more? Yeah. Rep. Grusko is saying more. He has a direct line into Bridgeport. Oh, John, I'm sorry, I didn't even see you there. Could've.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is gonna be item 6.2.6. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to move item 6.2.6, a resolution regarding Public Act 23-204, state grant allocation for the South End Community Center for fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24, be it as where it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Stratford enter into an agreement with the state of Connecticut in the amount of $55,000, requiring $0 in town match in fiscal year '23 and in fiscal year '24, in the amount of $5,000, requiring $0 in town match.
Okay, a motion's been made by Sutton. Do I have a second? I have a second from Ms. Danchow. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. I'm sorry.[1696.96]
Sorry, Chris.
Mr. Ken, I didn't see it.
Is this a first-year grant or is this a renewal?
I'll direct to the mayor if she can answer that.
Yeah, it's a first-year grant. Nice job, Ty. Nice job, Molly. And thank you, Heron.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 6.2.7. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Connor.
I'd like to make a resolution regarding the U.S. Department of Transportation promoting resilient operations for transformative, efficient, and cost-saving transportation grant program for the amount of $697,645 and there's no matching dollars.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Connor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on this item?
Just.
Ms. Rice.
Through you. Just curious, the flooding that there are, the issues that they are addressing on access road, 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 will they also help with, for instance, a Surf, Surf, Surf Avenue flooding? Will they help with other, other flooding in other, other areas or is it just a specific to, 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 to this area? Maybe Mr. Case, Casey can answer it.
Madam Mayor, do you have any?
Well, we have so much flooding that inevitably one thing affects the other, but John, if you want to come and talk about it, you can. This isn't specifically Surf Avenue. This is really access road into the Environmental Justice District where all our residents, a lot of our residents have issues.
Oh, that was the other part, part of this question. Would it be specifically to help res-residential as well, 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 the residents as well, well?
So, I'm going to, the, the motion is for 6.2.7, which is an application for access road. So, John, if, I'm going to limit discussion to access road specifically for this.
Can I just see the?
He's working on a lot of flooding, planning grants, implementation grants, water pollution control, Surf Avenue. I can't keep them all straight.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, so this, this grant is, is to implement the recommendations that are being developed right now by the CIRCA study, which is the Coastal Resiliency Study being done for the, for the South End. And one of the projects they're looking at is flood protection along access road and they are also alternatively looking at some improvements to the Route 113 that runs along, through the marsh, along the south side of the airport to larger, to larger community. And those projects would be designed to help, help keep the flood, the coastal flooding from reaching further inland. So, access road would become, you know, not necessarily access road itself, but you know, that general vicinity would have some kind of flood protection under the scope of this.
Okay, so this is not really designed for res-residential at this point, point, just those rules?
You know, everything helps, everything, you know, the South End comes from all different directions. So, we need to do a piece here and a piece there and eventually we would have everyone covered.
Okay, thank, 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 thank.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.8. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
Motion to approve item 6.2.8, a resolution regarding a grant request to the AARP Foundation supporting new benches and memorial plaques to be installed at the Baldwin Center and this is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Stratford enter into agreement with the AARP Foundation in the amount of $4,147, requiring $0 in town match.
Motion's been made by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Sutton. Discussion, Ms. Dancho.
Mr. Chairman, I motioned, I'd like to make an amendment.
Ms. Dancho, go for it.
Thank you. In the executive summary, I will read the executive summary. I'd like to make some changes in there. The AARP Foundation is Connecticut's Livable Communities Grant Program is offering grant funding to towns and nonprofits for projects benefiting senior citizens. The town of Stratford through the Baldwin Center has applied for a not-to-exceed $4,200 grant to support the purchase and installation of two to three Carnival brand sitting benches and two memorial plaques to be affixed to said benches at the Baldwin Center. And also in the last whereas, I would like to change the amount of 4147 to read not-to-exceed $4,200.
Motion to amend by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Discussion, just so everyone's aware, Mr. Carroll, who helped write the grant, just brought a couple material, just changes on the dollars, if you noticed. So, in summary, the 4147 that everyone sees, he asked that we would make it not to exceed $4,200 and then the installation of two Carnival brand sitting benches, you'll see, he's thinking between two and three. So, we gave the flexibility of two to three. And then the dollar amount at the end is to reflect the initial dollar amount change, just so everyone's clear. Okay? Any other discussion? Mr. Town Attorney, that sounded good?
Sounded fine, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Flor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on, to amend, excuse me, as amendment proposed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair, any opposed? No opposed, most, Chair votes aye. Motion passes nine zero. I'm losing it today, I'm sorry. Back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 6.2.9.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Who was that? Ms. Shake, sorry.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6.2.9, a resolution regarding a grant request to the Department of Justice Edward Bryn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, program supporting the purchase of body cameras for the Stratford Police Department and that the town of Stratford enter into an agreement with the U.S. DOT in the amount of $13,000, requiring $4,255 in town match to come from the Stratford Police Department General Fund.
Motion's been made by Ms. Shake.
I'll second.
Missed, seconded by Councilwoman Dancho. Any other discussion on that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Is there anyone here that, from the police department?
There is not.
Okay. My question would be, I would just like to know out of how many police officers that we have, how many of them have this already and how many of them are still in need percentage-wise?
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All of our police officers have body cameras as they are being replaced in new technology. This will provide that technology.
That's excellent.
So, the old ones go out and the new ones come in.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, bless you. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item is going to be 6.2.10, as amended by, on the amended agenda Ms. Paquette put on everyone's desk. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move 6.2.10, a resolution regarding a grant request to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for facility improvements to the Sterling House Community Center whereas it is desirable and in the public interest of the town of Stratford, make an application to HUD for a total of $1,500,000.
Okay, motions been made by Mr. O'Brien.
I'll take improvements to Sterling House.
Thank you. Ms. Dancho on the second. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item under new business referred by Public Works, item 7.1. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
Motion to approve item 7.1.
Motion to approve by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sutton. Any discussion? These items were referred from Public Works. The minutes are in the pony.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Thank you. Just for clarification, when we're making Robert's rules, because these were all forwarded, do we just have to make a motion to accept or do we have to state the dollar amount?
The motion to approve item 7.1 is sufficient.
Okay, moving forward. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 7.2. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I motion to approve item 7.2.
Motion to approve item 7.2. I'll take a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Shake. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 7.3. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I have motion to approve item 7.3.
Okay, motion, motion to approve item 7.3 by Ms. Dancho.
I'll second.
I have a second by Ms. Shake. Okay, any discussion on that item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. That was 7.3. Next item under Public Works, next item is going to be item 7.4. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Thank you. Motion to approve item 7.4.
Motion to approve item 7.4. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Sutton. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll go for a vote.